Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Sessions for January 9th, 2022. Do I have a motion to go into a closed session?
Pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305 and 3-104, I move for the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County to meet in closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals, and to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations.
Have a motion, second. All those there say aye.
Aye.
We'll return at 5 o'clock for our regular work session. Thank you. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Sessions for January 19th, 2022. Will you stand for pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in here say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, approval of minutes for January 5th closed session. Everybody had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to approve the minutes, open and close, for January 5th, 2022?
Second.
Motion and second to approve both the closed and open sessions for January 5th, 2022. All those in here say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we, in front of us now have January 12th closed session and budget work session minutes in front of you. Does everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may I please make a motion to accept the closed session and budget work session minutes for January 12th of 2022?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in here say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Salins, we have our COVID-19 update.
Yes, I just want to tell the board know that we still have not received the state reports that we were getting from the governor's office through Dr. Sia Tola's office because of the hack to the system. While I know that there's data out there, that official report has not come that it was on a daily basis, and that's why you haven't been getting that on a daily basis. Although we are following closely the attendance of students and staff every single day, that report goes to Dr. Sia Tola every evening, and we discuss that. So we are definitely taking a keen eye, looking from school to school, to ensure that we make sure that, you know, we're monitoring the staffing numbers, making sure that we're being able to cover safely the classrooms. And so, you know, that's really the report that, I don't really necessarily have a report to provide for you. As soon as the Health Department generates that same report through the governor's office to Dr. Sia Tola, I'm certain that he will start forwarding that to me again. But in the absence of that, we are just basically talking on a daily basis and monitoring our county data as it relates to attendance for staff and students.
But we do our own attendance for staff and students.
Correct.
And, doctor, of course, you're in touch with Dr. C. all the time. We don't, do we see anything that's getting close to, in your opinion, of the numbers we're seeing in our schools or whatever?
No, thankfully, while the cutoff is typically 10%, so if you get to an absenteeism rate at 10%, and that's mostly looking at students, that's when the Health Department would contact us to say, basically, hey, we see that specific school is at 10%. Let's talk through why they're at 10%. Because sometimes there is a particular reason, or sometimes there is actually like an outbreak of strep throat, or it could be a variety of things. And so they kind of evaluate it. Sometimes they'll just monitor it. It could be one classroom that they would recommend to close down. So 10% is usually the threshold. Obviously, with COVID, that threshold is a little bit higher. So, but again, we always look at what's behind the data to determine. Just because a student is absent doesn't necessarily mean that it's COVID-related. So we need to make sure that we, you know, take, you know, attention to the detail behind the data so that we're making good decisions as it relates to a closure for quote-unquote COVID.
I mean, I know that the teachers and principals were gearing up for our students to be able to take Chromebooks home and stuff. And, of course, when they hear that, they think something's going to happen and, you know, gets a bit, you know, we're prepared, but we're not anywhere near anything that we feel that's going to be a shutdown of any one school at this time.
And that's correct. We have to be prepared. It's not just that simple Chromebook. It's transportation. It's food service. There's lots of different, you know, tentacles to closing a school district down and going virtual. And we need to make sure, and we obviously need to refresh for students who have been in school, thank goodness, this whole year, you know, for what would their login be if they're in elementary school? How do I get back into Schoology? And so we want to make sure we're prepared, that if we have to turn on a dime, that we're ready to. We weren't prepared to turn on a dime when we first started the pandemic, and ultimately that resulted in greater gaps for students. If we are able to be prepared, then we can turn on the dime, and students are ready to engage in learning, and we can almost not skip a beat and ebb and flow between that face-to-face and virtual. So, you know, if a school does have to go for numbers related to COVID, or specific something else, as I said, strep throat or something, that we would be ready to continue that instruction for two weeks virtually and then move right back in. So that ebb and flow is something that we need to be prepared for, even if we never use it, and I hope we don't have to.
It's insurance.
It's insurance.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, procurement policy 310. Jane, or Towers?
Good evening, Dr. Salins, President Smith, board members. Tonight we bring before you for information and review, this is a first read of an update of procurement policy 310 for goods and services procurement. And looking at this update on page one, it's just the title up top, strike out "public schools." It would read "The Board of Education of Queen Anne's County." And then on page three, under section four, item number C, "The solicitation threshold that prompts a formal procurement shall be $25,000 per vendor invoice."
Okay, I think we discussed this in a previous meeting, that, you know, we do have multiple times, like a patch job or curb job might be $5,000 at one school, $5 at another, and that stuff has to get done. Even I think our phone systems and stuff sometimes can, you know, and one or two can go down with age of the system. So that's the reason of this. It's not really changing anything, it's just how we're looking at it to make sure we're in compliance with our audit and everything.
Correct. It's, it becomes a little more complicated to track, especially if different departments order using the same vendors, because you have to add those two together and combine it to the $25,000, where if it's $25,000 per invoice, you pretty much know where you are as far as the threshold.
And so we're not changing 25. The 25 is still there. If we're going to bid something out for 25, it's going to be the same process as before with the board. It's just things below that would not be compounded at different times.
Yes, and then also think about too, when you bring it to the board for approval, it's, I'm not sure what I'm bringing, because it's this added to this, added to this, added to that. It tends to get...
I'm going to leave it.
Yes.
Okay. So let me understand this. If you have one vendor who is, different departments are asking something from that vendor, you're going to do each individual invoice separately? Or are you going to co...
It's, if it's ordered at different times of the year, then payment will go out separate. If it's due around the same time, the payment as far as the check will go out at the same time. But the invoice is generally per the order, so it would be for one department and then for the other department.
But if one school went over 25, at the invoice, it would be over 25, it would kick in for our $25,000.
Correct, for a single invoice. Correct.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we bring before you is our single audit for FY '21. As you know, the single audit is performed every year. It's part of our compliance. The auditor's report has been issued, is in front of you. So for FY '21, they tested the COVID relief funds, the educational stabilization funds, and then the child nutrition cluster. And in their opinion, the schedule of expenditures and awards were fairly stated, no findings or questionable costs.
Nice.
Twenty-one. Any questions on...
Yeah, just, not, on page six, the second to last paragraph, the last sentence, "We did not identify any deficiencies internal control over compliance that we consider to be material weakness. However, material weakness may exist that has not been identified." Just explain that to me.
Right, it's part of their...
Cover theirselves.
Yes, disclosure requirements that they have to disclose in case they were to happen to have missed something.
So they're basically, do this audit, and then put a disclaimer in that it might, that they could have missed something? I mean, I'm sure it's the way that accountants work, but it just kind of, to me, seems a little, you know, you ask them to do a job, and then they sit there. Is that what every, I'm certainly not picking on this group, but is that just normal accounting people that cover themselves that way?
It is a required disclosure that they state that in their report.
Well, they just picked three sections to audit, is that correct? And so they're...
Right, they rotate out. Correct.
Do you know what they're doing? Are you given the information ahead of time of which?
No, I am not. No, I'm not. It's generally the larger ones. So the COVID relief funds were a lot of money for this year. Then it can be the special ed cluster one year, it could be Title I. It will vary. We don't know until at the time when they come in audit which ones that they're looking for.
And we bid this out each year?
It actually was bid out a couple of years ago for a five, four or five-year contract.
So then when the four or five-year contract comes up, then we look, we visit it or something?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Jane, kind of on topic, but a little bit, I know we briefly touched on it outside the meeting when we were talking about S.R. stuff, but actually during the meeting, sorry. But do you know if all the, because it was changed where we could no longer use these shields? Remember you were going to see if we can return all those shields and change that money? Get the money back since it was not our fault?
I believe that's done through facilities, the actual return on that, and I think they're still working on that, because it's the process of even getting the items, let alone returning them. So I think they're still in the works on that, but I would defer that to Mr. Penner.
I'd have to take a look at it. You're talking about the face shields?
Yes, just because it got changed, you know, that we...
Sure.
Yeah, purchased them, and then were not able to use them.
And that was because the state told us they didn't qualify, so...
Right. We'll look into that, definitely.
Thanks.
Of course.
Okay, any further questions by the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Towers.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Budget survey results.
Good evening, President Smith, board members, executive team. My name is Lynette Powerwaters. I'm the communications specialist, and I'm here to present to you the results from the budget survey. We presented the fiscal year budget survey. We emailed it to staff, parents, community members on January 6th. We also placed it on our website and our Facebook page. Participants were given the opportunity to submit their responses until January 17th, and we received 621 responses. Please keep in mind, participants were able to leave answers blank if they did not feel it pertain to them or their families, so there weren't 620 responses for every single question. There's a lot of data here, but I will try and run through it quickly, and please stop me if you have any questions. The first question was, are you a parent, employee, or community member? They were able to answer multiple times on this. So we had 96% of the participants were parents or caregivers, 17% employees, and 10% community members. So although that doesn't add up to 100, it could be an employee as well as a parent that answered.
When you say employee, I guess you were going out by what email they used, if they...
No, we asked them specifically in the question.
Okay.
Are they a parent, are they employee?
Gotcha.
Yes. We also asked how many children are living in your household. 42% had two children or more, 40% had one children or more. As you can see, 620 total responses. 98% of the respondents had at least one child in Queen Anne's County public schools. So that's a very good indicator. The first question was, high levels of achievement graduating budget priorities, excuse me. We asked them what they felt priority was for our budget. The first question was, high levels of achievement graduating college and career-ready students. 473 responses said that, yes, that was number one, very important. And you can see the graph as we go down. Number two, the question was competitive salaries to attract and maintain high-quality teachers and staff. I know this is something HR is very near and dear to their heart, and we want to make sure that we maintain these high-quality teachers and staff. 444 participants said, yes, that was number one, very important. Small class sizes, low student-to-teacher ratios, 382 participants said, very important. Classroom technology, 271 said, very important. Textbooks and materials of instruction, 268. After-school programs for remediation and/or enrichment, 158 participants said, very important. And 174, close second, said it was second on their list of priorities. Renovation of rebuilding aging facilities, the number one response was, number two, 204 respondents said it was important to them. Safety and PPE supplies, COVID supplies, 234 participants said it was very important, number one. So to summarize that, 473 participants said the number one most important thing for budget to them was high levels of achievement graduating college and career-ready students. 445 said competitive salaries, and 383 said small class sizes. And you can go, if you keep reading down, you'll go down the list and see the other priorities. We also asked, does Queen Anne's County public schools provide adequate career and technology education? 537 people responded, and 70.4% said yes. Do we provide adequate additional advanced coursework? 528 responses, 79.5% said yes. Do you feel your child is educated in a safe and secure learning environment? 605 respondents, and 88.4% said yes. This graph is a little bit more difficult to understand, but it's rating the quality of the following items relating to supporting services. So the graph underneath at the bottom of this slide, I just broke down what the colored graph above said. So as far as rating, excellent for school bus, 192, 184 above average, 188, 18 and 10, as you can see. What I'm going to do is just reiterate what each item is, and then the average or above-average percentage is at the bottom. So school bus is 95%. We were average or above. Breakfast, 94% average or above. Lunch, 93%. Guidance and counseling, 89%. And health, 95%. I did the same thing with the other data that we requested, rating the following items and school facilities and grounds. Cleanliness of schools, we were 91% average or above. Safe, orderly environment, 92% or above. Classroom space availability, 88%. State of repair, maintenance, 85%. Overall appearance, 91%. Classroom furniture, 87. Parking areas, driveway, sidewalks, 87. School grounds, 95. And playground areas, 93. Rating, number one for the lowest and high, five for the highest. Please rate your customer service satisfaction when interacting with staff. 612 responses, and we were 96.4% average or above for customer service. That's amazing. That's really great. Rate your internet accessibility at your home. This was a question that we were asked to add at the end of the survey. It wasn't initially there, but it is very prudent and very important for our county because there are so many diverse neighborhoods and we're so spread out. There were 28% of the respondents, there were 620 responses for this, so just about everybody responded. 28% with little to no internet. That means 4% no internet, 6.5 little, and 17.5 some internet. 30% said average, and 42% said they had good internet. So in conclusion, with all this data that we did collect, budget priorities seem to include high levels of achievement graduating college and career-ready students, competitive salaries, small class sizes, improving our career and technology programs. 30% of the respondents felt that we were not adequate, so that's something I know that Adam Tully is working diligently on. Increase our advanced coursework, 21% felt we needed to improve. 89% of respondents felt their child is educated in a safe and secure environment, and we know that's one of our most important things to follow, so we really want to make sure everyone feels safe and secure. Increase our guidance and counseling services, 11% felt we needed work. Improve our building and maintenance, as well as our parking, walkways, and driveways, and our classroom space availability. Customer service was 96% above our average. Work with families that have average, below-average internet capabilities, which is 28% of the families. Like I said, I know that was a lot of data, but was there anything, any other specific questions or anything I could answer for you?
I have a quick question about the breakfast, because everybody could get it, correct?
Yes.
I mean, everybody could get it and the lunch. So it's interesting that the average was kind of like the biggest number. I mean, was this, do you think that people thought, was it the quality of the breakfast, or was it just the, you know, or was it the quality of administrative, like, what do you think? Because I thought we did an amazing job, Sedexo has done an amazing job with getting these meals out like they did during all this, so it's interesting to me.
We didn't ask any specific questions. Dr. Salins, would you like to elaborate on that, or maybe we can ask?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't. I mean, one can assume that that's the way you can interpret it, so I think maybe people interpreted it in different ways, but that is one way that you could interpret that data. I mean, maybe potentially next year, we could modify the question to be a little bit more specific so that we don't mislead one way or the other. Yeah.
Yeah, I just think Sedexo, I mean, they've just, I think...
They've done an amazing job.
Absolutely. Love and beyond, absolutely. And I know those ladies were out there, rain, snow, sleet, any, anytime out there outside, making sure everyone had food. It's amazing. Anybody else?
Well, I mean, in conclusion, I think we all know it, when you say budget priorities, competitive salaries and small classes end up to big bucks.
Yes.
I mean, that's people. That's 85% of our budget.
Absolutely.
So we look at those two things, and that's nothing new. I mean, we need smaller classes, competitive salaries, so we can all agree on that, but that's where majority of our money goes every year.
Besting in our people is huge.
Yeah, I mean, that's it. And the other thing, number five, and I heard this in the budget round thing, increase our guidance and counseling services. I mean, I think that's something we really need to look at, because they need to know the path they're going on, but I think that when you start talking counseling services, mental health, I think, is a major issue in this county, and I'm not going to blame it on COVID, because it's not helped anything, but it's just something that's going to, I think, snowball on ours.
I think the social and emotional well-being of all of our staff and students has been a huge priority, and I think that has been addressed. Dr. Salins, if you'd like to elaborate?
Yes, well, we've used S.R. funds to add additional positions as it relates to social workers. And as Mr. Smith alluded to during the budget process, that was one of the top three priorities, was to add additional guidance counselors, especially at the middle school level. So that's what our budget priorities will be as we work through the budget process.
I mean, you know, we need to know what's, and students need to know, because sometimes they don't know, you know? I mean, sometimes they know what they're going to be doing, sometimes they don't even through high school, you know?
Exactly.
And I think, I think as good assistance we got, we got to sit there and match to fit for people.
Right, and we do use Naviance, which is a really good tool.
And I think, when we met with the commissioners one time, they mentioned what they could do, you know, this counseling services and the social, and I mean, that's a priority. I mean, everybody comes to our school system, but they need to sit there and really understand there's some issues around.
Yeah.
That if we catch them, are we going to catch them now or catch them later?
Yeah, I think it's everywhere. It's not just...
Yeah, it's just where we live now, you know, this day and age.
Yeah, and, you know, I hate to say it, with social media, it's going to get not good. There's a lot of good things.
I have a teenager, I know.
Any other questions by the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Salins, you got the...
Yes, President Smith, members of the board. I bring to you an informational item, the hourly changes to increase the hourly scale. Typically, this time of year in January, mandates come out, and obviously, minimum wage, we know that that's been a hot topic in legislation, and we know that we have, that we're working towards that $15 an hour minimum wage. This year in January, that minimum wage hourly rate went to $12.50. So we started to adjust the scale, and then as we brought in Dr. Noel and really started to look at, where are we having the most challenging places in the district to fill positions? And it really is some of the employees that are on our hourly scale. As you can see here, that includes some of our substitutes, some of our custodians, our home hospital teachers, and those are the folks that this mostly impacts. And so what we decided to do was go ahead and, instead of waiting until next year and the following year to finally get to that $15 threshold, we decided to do that now. The budget impact is, does not impact the budget this year, I should say, because of additional fundings that we've had in other categories such as substitutes that we have not used, as well as S.R. funds to pick up some of this. So it's not going to impact the budget, and therefore, the board really doesn't have to vote on that, because it's not changing, modifying, or our current operating budget. But it's really an important thing for us to do. Earlier in the school year, we were having some concerns with substitute nurses, so we were able to modify just that line item and some of our extended long-term substitute nurses. So this, that portion was already done. We just kind of came back around and really cleaned up the rest of it. I will bring out a couple of things. In the green, you'll see that this is our PFY. This is actually set on a different schedule through that grant. I don't know that that's the best way to do things. I think we can continue to work with Ms. King, the coordinator there, to try to see if we can get some better alignment as we move into the following school year, but for right now, we weren't going to kind of tackle that. They were all, as you can see, above that threshold that we had set. So that really gives you some explanation to the yellows that had already been changed earlier in the fall, to the green area, which again, as I said, is a separate grant partnering for youth that Mrs. King, the coordinator, runs, and mostly, as you can see, the staffing that impacts, you know, her budget there. So if the board has any questions about the changes?
It won't affect this year's budget, but it will affect next year's budget, because, you know, these rates will stay in place.
That's correct.
Also, I want to make sure that we consider our employees, because at $15, you're talking $31,000 a year.
Correct.
Rough, 32, too. The county has a living wage, I think that's higher than that.
33, I believe, just over $33,000.
And I just think we need to really keep an eye on it, because I think we have a lot of people that support our system that have, you know, need to have a living wage.
And I agree, and that is actually, falls more under the negotiation realm, so I don't have the liberty...
Understand.
...to change that. This, because it's an hourly scale, I have the ability and my authority to change that, but certainly, I think that, we all know that that's of concern of ours, that, you know, the people who have, you know, that are on our regular scale for the support services one, two, and three, and really looking at those that are in the beginning of that scale, what that looks like, certainly as we move through negotiations, that would be something that, as a district, we all need to talk about and keep in mind.
Okay. The board have any other questions?
No, I just, I think it's just a great direction to go in, because people are so very important to us, and our goal to keep things safe and clean, and so that's really great. But I did have, and I'm sorry that I didn't ask this early, I did notice that the Title I tutor is not on the updated, is that one staying the same? The Title I tutor was 1665, is that staying the same?
No, it was collapsed into tutor, so it's not broken out.
Okay.
It just seemed kind of redundant to have it down below.
No, I understand that. And then, I should have asked this one, too, the retired QAC secretary. So she's retired, I shouldn't say she, sorry, any secretary, no matter whom.
Yes.
It's going to the 2130, but a regular secretary, is that the same job, whether you're a secretary substitute or the secretary? So they would make the 15, but the secretary substitute would make 2130? Is that correct?
I only see the one on here, so I'm confused.
I'm sorry, it's...
I see the retired QAC secretary, I see a retired QAC substitute teacher.
Yeah, so the QAC, the retired... Yeah, so the QAC, the retired QAC secretary. So this would be if they substituted as a secretary.
Yes.
They retired, so they would make 2130, but a regular secretary makes 15?
Where do you see regular?
That's down there in the hourly.
I can do the last. Secretary of Receptionist, that's correct. Because, you know, they likely have given us several years, and when they left us, had a different pay skill at that time.
Okay.
So that's how it's calculated. The exact percentage, I don't know. And I don't know that Jane knows off her head. But, but it's coming from where this years of service that they've already provided to the district.
Retired would, would come in with more knowledge.
Yes, they come in with more, yeah, experience. This would be someone who's just starting here, that $15 an hour.
And that's, and that's just an hourly rate, no benefits.
That's an hourly rate, no benefits. So this isn't, exactly.
So when you look at the other one, probably, well, it is. But that's something we need to address everywhere.
Yeah, that was a good question, though.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yes.
No, it's great.
Yes, I do, thank you. Just to reiterate that we are still within the budget. There's no extra money going out to cover these increases.
Correct. They're going to absorb it in for this year's budget.
It's being absorbed by what's, we don't have people in substitute positions. We have many people, you know, not in our system at the moment.
And really, we have the three years. And so we've articulated out during that three-year span of how we can increase that line item slightly each year to ensure that we can cover that. Because it, it's not an exorbitant amount of money, but it still is something that we need to make sure that we follow over the next three years so that when we get to the end of that, that we are well-prepared to have that in the operating budget. So we get three years to kind of loosen our belt a little bit in that line item.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Towers, you're up again.
Thank you. Good evening again. We bring before you tonight a transfer request for unrestricted budget. This is for FY '22. We have two things that we need to take a look at. The first is additional fixed charges for the December bonus. That was $80,919, and that was to come from fund balance. The other items here we have on this budget transfer request is mid-level administration, administration salaries to, to cover for mid-level salaries. And this is basically, we had leave payouts under the mid-level administration category, category number two. We had to increase the budget for the school secretaries and then to cover support for mid-level positions. So we like to transfer funds from tutoring savings to the mid-level. And then the next one, transportation. We're looking to increase salaries for subs, or not increase salaries, but put a budget line item for your substitute bus drivers and your bus attendants. There's currently no line item in the budget for those two categories. So that, again, would come from your savings from tutoring funds because we're utilizing restricted funds for that for this year. And then we have some savings in fixed charges.
How would that affect students needing tutoring if we're using those funds?
It won't affect the tutoring at all. We're utilizing restricted funds instead of unrestricted funds.
Okay.
So S or grant monies for the tutoring. We had about $700,000 to spend on the tutoring, which we've been using during the school year and actually in the summertime last summer as well. So that's been going very well. So knowing that we already had that in our budget gives us, you know, opportunity to say we're not going to be able to spend that because we're using those for funds to really spend that.
And then just the item of note two, the $125,000 for transportation salaries. We'll definitely have to work that into the budget for next year.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's no line item in there at all for substitute.
Wasn't one there for last year, or wasn't?
No, I looked back two years, and there was an initial one. There was actually budget amendments to get it put in during the year.
But never put into operating.
But the initial to start did not see any, no.
And also, I want to note that when it says this $80,919 from the fund balance is a one-time cost, because that was a one-time, we gave our teachers, I'm sorry, our employees, which was mainly funded through the county commissioners. This is just excess that we were putting up, but that the county did the rest of it. But this is a one-time cost, it's not a recurring. So it's coming out of the fund balance at a one-time thing.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So since there, it's all salaries. I mean, we're doing instructional salaries to mid-level salaries, instructional salaries to fringe cost to transportation salaries. There's not a problem. We have to send a letter over to the commissioners' desk for this anyway?
Yes, we do, yes, because we're moving within different categories. So yes, we do.
Okay, that's what, that's what's one of the different categories. Mr. Smith, may I please make a motion?
Is there any further comments?
Sorry, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Nope.
Okay, go ahead.
I appreciate that, thank you. I make a motion for the approval of the transfer request with budget amendment number four for FY '22. Major category, mid-level administration, instructional salaries and wages to mid-level salaries, 135,000. Major category, transportation, instructional salaries and fringe cost to transportation salaries, 125,000. Budget source, unrestricted funds. Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we now have to make a motion to send over the letter to?
The letter is attached as well.
The letter is attached.
I make a motion to send the letter over to the county commissioners regarding the earlier motion.
Second. I have the letter in front of me that's been signed by the Dr. Salins, and we will send that over along with this. All those in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board members have any thing for the calls? Future meetings, our next regular meeting will be February the 2nd. We will have a budget meeting on the 9th and a workshop on the 16th of next month.
So we're only two in February doing?
Three meetings.
Three.
Okay.
Second, second's our regular meeting, the 9th is our budget, and the 16th is our scheduled work session.
Okay.
So the extra meeting in February will be the budget on the 19th, the 2nd.
On the 9th?
The 9th, yes. And that will be at what time, 5:00 probably? 4:30?
I have 4:30.
4:30, is everybody good on that?
4:30 for the 9th?